Dunwoody City Council meeting on May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Councilman Laughton Barker, can you please lead us in the invocation and the pledge? Please rise.
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. So it was published on the agenda. It's missing from the print agenda, but we have a new police officer to give the oath to, so.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd ask Officer Christian Dobbins to come forward. It's my pleasure to introduce Christian to the to the mayor and council here. He was recently employed by the Georgia DOT as a hero operator. So he operated in our area. And he participated in the Police Explorer Program when he was with the Gwinnett County Sheriff's Office, their Explorer Program. And he also participated in the State Explorer Academy that we host. And I think he participated in that a couple of times. So we're excited to have him here, and he just graduated from the police academy. And so he's ready to get to work.
Thank you.
Mayor also forgot to mention that he received the highest academic award for his class.
Way to go. So Officer Dobbins, before you dash off to serve, I want to say how grateful we are that you have chosen Dunwoody to serve our community and how appreciative our community is of our police department and our public servants. And so thank you again, and don't hesitate to reach out to any of us if there's anything we can do to make your time here easier. And once again, thank you so much for choosing Dunwoody. Welcome. And thank you to all of those in the back who have joined for this. We appreciate your service. Thank you. So now it's time for public comment. We will have three minutes of speaker up to thirty minutes. And if there's a need for additional, or if you, we also do public comment at the end of the meeting as well. So Nancy, I'm going to say this wrong. Echus, yes, Edgerson, thank you. Right here, and make sure, please make sure the green light is on the microphone and pull it as close to yourself or lean in so we can be sure to hear you. And you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Nancy Edgusen. I live at the end of Lake Springs Drive, and I share a border from the street to the back of my property with the Marcus Jewish Community Center. About seven or eight years after I bought my house, they moved their day camp from where the parking lot is now to right near my house, parallel to it. And the camp shelters are closer to my house than any of my neighbors' homes. The main problem is they have an outdoor sound system with numerous speakers and microphones. Living next to an entity rather than people or on residentially zoned property, which although the entity is nonprofit, it still needs to make enough money to break even. And so in many ways, functions like a business lowers my property value and quality of life. They don't seem to care about being good neighbors out of the goodness of their hearts. I think they will only make changes when forced to by the city's ordinances or laws. Because of where the camp is situated, my house absorbs a lot of the sound from their speakers, and my neighbors don't hear the noise inside their homes. My floors and walls vibrate from base speakers. I can hear their music and noise in every room in my house. For your consideration, I brought the ordinance currently in effect in Gwinnett County, and something similar is being considered into CAB, which was enacted in part because, quote, commissioners recognized that excessive noise is detrimental to individuals and the community in the enjoyment of life and property. They wanted to adopt reasonable regulations that were clear to follow and easy to enforce. The decab ordinance under consideration was modeled after one from Athens Clark County. And the draft says during the day, noise from music, a party, or a person shouting cannot be audible from inside a home more than three hundred feet away, a hundred feet at night. Gwinnett defines noise disturbance as a sound that's audible to the human ear. Times of day and distance determine the disturbance, not decibels, which can be difficult to measure, especially bass sounds. Newport Ritchie, Florida allows officers to give citations if they hear specifically bass noise that is plainly audible at a distance of one hundred feet from the property line. No decibel measurement necessary. Even the residents near Camp Runamut have a ban on daytime barking outside Monday through Saturday. And those people bought homes that were clearly near commercial property, and they have more relief than I do. You've put restriction on noise from Airbnbs. Living next to the JCC, I expected to hear noise from children playing, but I thought I was protected by residential zoning laws. I also knew the land next to me had never been disturbed before, and I didn't have any reason to think that would change at that time. I would like changes to our noise ordinance with me based on plainly audible sound. I would like to be able to sleep past eight, ten summer mornings if I choose to, just as the Runamut neighbors enjoy. Just because there's only one of me with complaints shouldn't affect my right to peace and quiet and normal enjoyment of my single family property located in a residential neighborhood. I don't live in an apartment or near a commercial district. I have recent recordings on my phone that I'd be happy to share, and I think the noise volume would surprise you. Some of you know I lost a work at home job ten years ago because of the noise from the JCC at a time long before work from home was popular or accepted.
Thank you very much.
And never was able to replace that job. I have a copy of.
If you'll give it to Ms. Lowry right there, that would be great. Thank you. Joe Hirsch.
Hello, I want to help.
One second, let's wait one second. Joe, we'll start your time when. Thank you. Sharon, okay, you ready? All right, Mr. Hirsch, you have three minutes.
I'm wanting to help all of y'all on council in the city tonight with the Open Records Act and understanding parts of it since our outside attorney, John Bennett, is inept. I want to explain to you in my three minutes, what I can, what transitory records are. Transitory records are those that have no future value and will not be required for future reference. They do not have any ongoing operational, informational, evidential, or historical value. And transitional, transitory records can be destroyed. So I'll give you a couple more examples. Transitory records do not provide any evidence for decision making, and they don't show or reflect any operations or responsibilities of the city. So what can be destroyed? If you get an email or a text message or something, you can destroy some of the boring things like notices of meetings that are already documented within the city, routine memos that you are not the author of. If you're carbon copied on something and you don't have to take any action on it, those are transitory records. Or if you get an agenda for tonight, you can delete those if there's no action required and doesn't give any insight into the city. So let's make sure that you've been paying attention. Let's say, for example, that the Dunwoody police, that a Dunwoody police officer has a current Equal Employment Opportunity Commission and EEOC complaint with the city claiming that he was mistreated. And then the police department threatens to fire him. So if WSB TV comes to Dunwoody City Hall to interview that police officer, and the police chief sends a text message about that TV station's interview to our city manager, does the city manager have to keep that text message you receive from the police chief? I hope you all nod your heads, yes, yes, indeed. The city manager is required under the law. He should preserve that text as it directly relates to the city's thinking on that officer. In fact, it's a violation of the law if he doesn't. Even if he gets a new cellphone, he can't destroy what was in the last cellphone and say, I don't have those records anymore. What would prevent him from getting a new cellphone every week and destroying records? You might want to ask our city manager that. And then let's go a little bit, you know, it's the content of the message. It's not the fact that it came as a text message that exempts him, it's the content. And so then even if our police chief, let's say, deletes text messages himself related to that officer, that's a violation of the law for open records. It's also called spoliation of evidence in anticipation of litigation. You need to be aware of that. The city is now on notice. The Attorney General's Office requires that you should preserve everything and anything, including text messages that have a useful life. So now you know what transitory records are, and you know that you should not be deleting them, and you must give copies of them when the city is required to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public speaking, a public comments for this portion of the agenda. We will have another meeting after, another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Next up, Mr. Litten, please.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. City managed report for the week ending May sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. The first area to focus on is the police department. We are, we do have some new flock license plate readers. One will be going in at the old Austin Elementary School site very soon. That's going to be the latest camera we're putting up. We also did do a distracted driving detail on Ashford Dunwoody Road and issued sixty-two citations, fifty of which were for the hands-free violation. As you work, look through the workload and activities for the department. Once again, I'll point out the LPR hits that we have within that department. Quite a detailed report throughout this. This is available, of course, to the council, obviously, and to the public as well. And you encourage everyone to read those, those reports to have a better understanding of the activities going on within the city of Dunwoody. Public Works, the Tilly Mill Path and Tilly Mill Cyborg Projects. The public comment period is now during the month of May. Also, our annual paving will begin this month as well. Spalding at Shamlee Dunwoody Intersection, Construction Fifty-Seven, which is our primary contractor on that job, should complete their work in May. However, there's still some other operations to be completed, which is the final paving, switching over to the new traffic signal, and also some utility work under Spalding Drive as it hits the city limit with Sandy Springs. That, that will happen over the summer. That particular piece of it, the rest of it will be completed within May. The Georgetown Gateway Project continues to go on with some utility relocation. And now we're working on overhead lines in that area. Winter's Chapel Phase One Comcast is working on their lines in that area for that project. There will be some minor traffic delays during the week time or during the weekdays between nine AM and four PM. Shamlee Dunwoody Womack Intersection is awaiting a start date from Atlantic Gaslight to relocate some utilities there. But that, the contractor will begin clearing some areas within the site this month. In the Parks Department, the food truck Thursdays began last week. We also have our movie nights coming up, starting in June, June third with ET. And then we have some other movies later in the, during the summer. So take a look at that calendar as time allows. The Brook Run Monument Sign has been taken down. This is one of the last architectural features of the, of the former, the former Brook Run facility that was there before the park. And that's been taken down to be in keeping with our new sign program for our parks. Community Development, we have quite a few planning commission items coming up tomorrow night. And, and also we'll have those items will move forward to our next city council meeting next month, or next week, excuse me, two weeks, I should say. The department also completed six hundred and thirty building inspections. High Street is progressing with buildings one through four, and Building Three has started the third floor of the parking deck and retail area. So that project, I think I mentioned this last time, if you have not had the opportunity to drive by there, please do. It's always fun to see a project like that as it's starting out. And as y'all know, that has been, that was a, will be a real change to the skyline of that portion of the city. The, the staff issued forty-five code enforcement warnings and five citations. Staff also conducted a hundred and thirty-six code enforcement inspections, including fourteen vacant properties. And we removed thirty-one signs. Here again, I point all that out, and I want you to see that the code enforcement, I want the public to see. Code enforcement is out there quite often. If you ever have any issues, please give us a call or go onto the online portal, and we'll be glad to take a look at that. That's, that's, that's an operation that is always sensitive to a lot of people in terms of the topics that come up, and we do give our, do our best to try to resolve those items. The Edge City Two Point Oh under Economic Development, that continuing to be a, a project that we're moving forward with, creating a shared economic vision for the perimeter market or the commercial area here or in the perimeter area. There's some other reports in here I'm not going to read through it during the IT, from the IT department. Also, marketing and communications, promotion of our new interactive public art map. If you haven't had a chance to pull that up, please do. It's very, it's very well done, and it's a neat locational map of different artwork within the city. Creation of our welcome packet for new residents. And also, we have promotional materials for our new town, for our upcoming town hall meetings. If you go throughout the marketing and communications area, there's several links in there that you'll click on at your leisure that go through the activities within the city. There's also a link under finance that has the monthly finance report for March. Also, the finance department was awarded the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, Award for Excellence under our highlights. Also, the finance team members continue their professional development in the tenet of two safety coordinator and risk courses. That's our risk management portion of the department. And also filed our comprehend, our compliance reports with the Treasury Department on the American Rescue Plan Act funds. As y'all know, all those different funds are monitored and ready to be audited at any point in time, and we do keep up with those funds very closely. Municipal court disposed of more than five hundred and three cases, and fifty-eight cases were reset last month. Human Resources, we did have our employee appreciation breakfast last Thursday. And I want to thank the council for their support of those breakfasts that we have from time to time. We did have to defer this one numerous times because of COVID. So I was glad we got that one in when we did. We had a beautiful morning for that. Also, Human Resources and the Wellness Committee are sponsoring hearing screenings for all employees in the month of May. There's a set schedule that employees can sign up for. Those are just some of the highlights for the departments. I'm glad to answer any questions, Mayor, that you or the council may have.
Thank you. Tom, do you have any questions? Okay. Rob, anybody? Catherine?
Yes. Can you tell me how many police officer slots are open? The report wasn't specific.
Yeah, yeah, at the last count, we had, we had eight still open, eight positions open, which was down from, we had about eleven. So that's coming down. We do have several other candidates I signed off on last week. We got some more to look at again this week. But that's an estimated number unless the chief's going to nod his head. Eight, eight is the correct number. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions, John? Sorry, I'm mixing it up.
Thank you, Eric, for the report. The one thing that always jumps out at me looking at these reports in the police item is the amount of overdoses that we're seeing. It's just, it's shocking. You would think that Dunwoody being a well-to-do community, we might be immune to these types of events, but in reality, we're not. So month after month after month, we're seeing that our police officers are providing Narcan to those who have overdosed in our community, saving most of them. I'm just wondering if there's anything more that we can do. I know our police department has the Narcan, and I believe we have plenty of it. I've talked to somebody who works in the industry and is able to provide free Narcan to businesses and others. I'm just wondering if there's anything more we can do. I saw there, there was a victim at Lazy Dog in one of the restaurants. Every restaurant, I imagine, has an AED box. That AED box has an alarm typically when you open it. I'm just trying to wonder if there's anything more we can do in the sense of the Narcan, Narcan aspect, because these types of events are happening every single month. I'm just wondering if there's more we can do. I just, you know, Chief, I see you walking up. I don't know if you have any comments.
Sure, I'd, I'd be happy to speak on that for just a moment. Recently, I think most of you know, but we have an officer on the Drug Task Force to hide a high-intensity drug trafficking area. We held our last board meeting in El Paso, Texas, and also got a tour of the border. And one of the things that, that we found out pretty clearly is there has been a tremendous uptick of fentanyl coming across to the United States from Mexico. And so a lot of the pills and different things that are coming in has fentanyl, even cocaine has fentanyl mixed in with it, which is, you know, pretty deadly and is causing a lot of the issues that we're seeing. And so in answer to your question, one of the things that, that I talked to the city manager the other day about this is holding kind of a community educational event, trying to schedule that with some information. And maybe use some real-life examples that we've seen in Dunwoody, because it doesn't, it doesn't recognize your socioeconomic status. It doesn't recognize your race, gender, anything like that. People of all types are affected by this. And, you know, we've had really young people that overdosed and older people who overdosed. So doing some kind of a community event, educational kind of component with some examples of things, you know, not with, obviously, the people's names, but some examples of things that we've dealt with. And I think maybe, you know, we can look at, maybe potentially doing some kind of program if we could get some free Narcan that we could provide to businesses, especially that have a lot of people there. We haven't seen too many. That was a little out of the ordinary at the Lazy Dog. But, but certainly, I think that's the potential moving forward with the influx of fentanyl is certainly concerning. And last year, we had the most overdose deaths that we've had as a city since we've been tracking it. We had six. And this year, I think we've had three or four already. And so it's very tragic, and I appreciate you, you know, bringing some attention to that.
Thank you, Chief. We, we didn't talk in advance, so this was just the fact that it is an issue, and I recognize it. You recognize it, brought to the city manager. So thank you for doing that. As an FYI, anybody can go to your local CVS and buy Narcan just to have in your house. If you have teenagers in the house, you just may want to have a, a little thing on the side. I'm not, I don't remember the cost, but it wasn't much money. But anybody can go get Narcan and carry it with them or have it available in their household or their business. But thank you. I look forward to the outreach and more presentations because I think it's an important subject for the city. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hey, Eric, thanks for the report again, and it's, it just really gets good detail just throughout, right? Just what are we doing? What have we done? What are we planning to do? Buried in the finance area or finance, the top three items, I just want to have a big shout out. It's under finance, but I would put this under strategic quality of life, direction improvement. Notice of intent to award for Dunwoody Village Phase One Schematic Multimodal Plan, Dunwoody Village with Kimley Horn. So looking forward to that. We talked about that at the retreat. So, you know, trying to nudge that forward, walkability, see what that looks like. Number, second one, sidewalk installation along the front of the post office potentially. And it's great to see that, we're moving forward that. And then the last one is this bike path plan we, for proposal for Dunwoody. We've got all the pieces. It's now we can just kind of put it in one place. So I really appreciate us on those top three under the finance area. Thank you.
Just two questions, and Chief, I'm probably going to call you back up.
I'm going to call you back up, too.
Come on. And of the eight positions, how many are officers versus like the police transport or the prisoner transport officer? How many would be?
Those are all officer positions. We do have a prisoner transport officer.
So it's eight officer, police officer, plus some, some of the support people. Okay, and this is just kind of for my edification because I don't know the answer. Why do you, why are they adding the fentanyl? Because they're killing their customers, so.
I don't, I don't know, necessarily know the answer to that. I think, you know, for some, it, you know, they want that extra high or whatever. But other than that, I don't really, I don't really know.
Okay, so I'm not missing anything? Okay.
Um, so I had the same theme as Councilman Henigan, which is every month I notice the Narcon. And in one case, a month or two ago, y'all said in the report it was a repeat visit, the same person.
Multiple times, and the young lady that died was a repeat as well.
In Dunwoody or just?
In Dunwoody.
Wow.
She overdosed twice, and the last time was fatal.
Okay, which is tragic. So I'm curious, though, and I want to be careful how I word this, but are there consequences? So when y'all show up at the third time at someone's home, so when, when crack was a problem, not to draw attention to that, people went to jail right, left, north and south. Everybody went to jail. What is the protocol now?
So if, if, if typically, in most of the cases, they've taken whatever drugs they had. And so, you know, there's really no drugs there to arrest them. But there's also a law that was passed related to people calling to encourage people to call and not be afraid of being arrested.
Right.
And so we have that to work with as well.
But I thought that protected the person calling. Does it also protect the person ingesting?
I don't, I don't think it does, but we've not typically prosecuted.
Right, I understand that. I understand the complexities of addiction. I am concerned, though, that an escalation, that we are in some ways enabling. I mean, obviously, if they die, we're not enabling anything. But is there not a way to refer them to treatment? Could we have, look at a drug court situation like some places have?
Unfortunately, a lot of the times that we're going, they're in a, a facility already, under treatment.
Okay.
And they're overdosing.
All right.
So that, that's problematic for us. And believe it or not, the majority of people that are out kind of flatline that we give Narcan to then refuse to go to the hospital.
Yeah, I'm sure they refuse to. Is there any advantage of us considering to, I mean, I have no idea of what I'm speaking, but a drug court situation like some places do? Or is that best left?
Typically not municipal.
Okay.
It's usually a county.
Okay, I just would like to see people get help. And in terms of community education, I think that's a really good idea. I think we ought to also be looking at getting in the high school and the middle school with, I mean, the grownups can be invited, but the kids need to understand, the parents need to understand so they can tell their kids, but the kids don't always listen to their parents. And I think we've got to get some way to get in front of these kids. Because our, many of our children have the financial means to acquire things and they need to understand.
Unfortunately, a lot of the drugs they're overdosing on is not very expensive.
Right. And so I didn't know that. That's interesting. But we need to get the message into our students to understand that one time could be one time, could be their last time. If it's, you, you don't know what you're buying. So as we work on that, if we could look at that too.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? And thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Tom, you okay? Okay, anybody?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by John, second by Stacy. Any further discussion? Oh, I missed all that. Thank you very much for getting these restrooms done so the park can truly be a public park. Any further discussion seeing none, I call the question, if you can signify by raising your hand since we have, if you're in support, raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you all. The consent agenda passes.
Moving to business items, we have American Rescue Plan grant for after-school programs for the summer of 2022. Jay Benicki.
Mayor and council, this is kind of unique. This will be the first program put before the council using American Rescue Plan funding. Currently, out of the eighteen million that has been received by the city, about three point eight has been appropriated by y'all. One was for Perimeter Center East Park, half million dollars for wayfinding signage and three hundred thousand for stormwater expediting. But this is the first community-based program. And to give you a little bit of background on the history, we're kind of saying, okay, there needs to be some type of school program. We're still not totally geared up. So we put an RFP out on the street just to see who had stuff out there. And some of our vendors had talked to us about that. Only one officially applied during the, the part, which gave us permission to negotiate with them since it was an RFP process. And it's one of the eight firms that we used with us. I called the gang of eight from the Cares Funding, eight local not-for-profits that we all now have a good working relationship with. So we in Corners Outreach sat down and came up with a different way instead of a grant part of this. Corners is able to do this. What they want to do is expand their program. So they were looking for originally a grant of a hundred ninety-six thousand dollars to operate two hundred and fifty slots over the course of the summer. Instead of doing it that way, what we're doing is, and, and giving, what we were doing, the original proposal was we would give them money. They would buy this, they would buy that, they would hire teachers. Instead, what we're doing is advancing them the money and they expect to get two hundred and fifty students. So what we did was we figured it's about seven hundred and eighty-four bucks a student. We'll advance some funding for one seventy-five, which is their current enrollment. So we've gone, if, if approved, they'll get that. If they make one seventy-five, they get to keep it. If they get below one seventy-five, they have to pay us back for each one less. If they get more than seventy-five, they'll get seven hundred and eighty-four dollars more. So it does put some risk on Corners. They're okay with it. They like the way this is working. And Brent Walker and I have talked this, so the parks department has similar programs. If this works out this way, we might try to expand it to some of partners later in the year. But we want to try it with them and I think it will actually be a success. Any questions?
Anybody have questions?
Move to approve.
I did have a question.
Somebody needs a second at first at this point because there's a motion. Moved by Joe, seconded by John. Any further questions or discussion?
So there, there technically then is also some risk on us.
Yes, and that's why we're cap, we'll cap it at two hundred thousand.
That's what I was going to ask. Is there an upward cap?
A million, a million students enroll, we would be on the hook for seven point eight.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be quite a story.
Sorry, I read this last week and it's been a long.
Right, right. Tommy, you okay? Okay, I wanted to just make a comment or a question. It's really a comment. So Corners is going to, so for everyone wants to know what we're getting for our money. For the K through five, they're going to do eight weeks, four days, four full days and a half day of instruction. But it'll be reading, it'll be tutoring and regular camp activities as well so they can have some fun. And then for the middle school and high school kids, it will actually be at Peachtree Middle School and it will be five weeks. And then unrelated, I think to this funding, they're also doing something for early childhood, which is not related to, to our funding. But, and so the kids will get four, seven-hour days and a half day. The high school, middle school program will be specialized to their need and related to sort of the building schedules. That's one of the limitations. And so we have a motion on the floor. If anyone else has any comments or questions, I call the question. All in favor, say, raise your hand. Any opposed, seeing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Jay. And I have spoken to Corners and we're going to send an email in the morning to all the elementary school, middle school and high school principals to let them know this is available and how to communicate for Corners. All right. Mr. Starling.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're talking about the art ordinance. Back in late twenty twenty, you passed the, the public art ordinance, which created the Art Commission, also created the rules on how you get public art accomplished. Since that time, we've had eighteen public art submissions approved. Not all of those have been put up yet, but eighteen have been approved by the Art Commission. We have found that there are two issues with requirements we have with moving forward. There was a lot of debate about both of these during the time we wrote the ordinance. But we felt like we wanted to be as conservative as possible at that time. But we think these two issues are going to significantly decrease the amount of public art and the kinds of public art we're going to have in the future. So those are the themes that are required for all submissions to meet. There are six of those. Those were originally put in the Art Master Plan as sort of, we wanted artists when they came to Dunwoody, not just to create their art, but actually to create art that was specific to Dunwoody. So in the, in the art plan, we wanted to put some themes and this is who we are. So look a little deeper into Dunwoody. Those were included in the art ordinance. And what that has done is it started to sort of force artists into almost a marketing art. And it, and it comes across very, they follow the themes, but that's all we're getting. And it's getting difficult, I think, for us to get real art. So we would like to remove those from the ordinance. Second is an easement that was required. This was a significant debate during writing the ordinance. And we are finding that very few private property owners will sign the easement. So that means, you know, if we want to put a piece of art on a large building, office building or the mall, every time their legal department sends that back and says, we just can't. You know, we're not going to sign this easement to allow the city basically to come on our property anytime they want to and remove this piece of art. So we don't think it's necessarily needed. We've done a lot of research since we put the ordinance in place. We, we believe with the Art Commission and the rest of the way the ordinance is written, we don't need that final stick, so to speak, for the, for the city council to be able to go and remove our, we think the Art Commission can control that on the front end. So those are the two things we would like to remove. So I'll open up for questions.
Thank you. Tom, you have anything?
Yeah, thanks Lynn. And thanks, Michael. I'll just say, yeah, I think it was smart of us to come out of the gate a little bit conservative with easement. But I also think it is smart and a logical next step to, to make some amendments here. It, it is, you know, you don't, you don't want to, I guess, choke the creativity out of the artist. So I think it's, it's a smart idea. And I, and I, it's nice to see the art popping up around the city. I hope it continues and I hope we'll see even in better things coming. So thank you.
Um, anybody down here on this end?
I'll just second, I'll second Tom. I, when, when the original ordinance became, or came before the planning commission, I think pretty much we all universally thought it was too restrictive. So I'm glad it's being eased up a little bit now.
John.
Michael, can you tell me if the art, this is con in front of the Art Commission and they actually vote on it or are they in agreement?
They did not vote on it, but we talked about it at their last board meeting last week and they, they agree.
Thank you.
Joe.
The role of Mayor Council, is that remaining the same?
That remains the same. So, so during the original ordinance, the only time you got to see it was the actual easement. And we have put that basically on consent. So that was you officially agreeing to a, you know, a, a, a legal agreement that we could place that art on. So that would go away. So, but you, you, you'll not see the art in the future, which I, my understanding is the council does not want that role.
Thank you. Anybody else? John, go ahead.
What's the status of those easements that are currently in place? That, do they revert back? Are they given back? How does that work?
I think all of them that are up happen to be with sprule. So those don't really matter. It's, it's our property anyway. So we're sort of doing the easement with ourselves. I don't think there's another one that's on private property. We can go, Ken and I can, can talk about how we unravel that if we need to.
Did Panda Express have to get an easement?
They did.
So y'all will figure out how to unravel all that.
We, we may not need to unravel. It may just continue. They were, they were willing to, but they were the only private property owner at this point who was willing to sign the easement.
So, well, since we're cleaning up this ordinance, is there anything else that, I mean, I know you, you picked out it. Did you get all the stuff? Because I know there's been some, I don't know the right word, confusion about the parks and the Art Commission. Is that the right word?
We, we do have some issues with, with what I would consider temporary art. Some of the art that we do around events like the Heritage Months. It puts a, quite a bit of strain on the Parks Department to get that done because you, you have to get the agreements done so far in advance. I'm not sure how we would write though a, a change. What, what, could, could you have a temporary art versus a permanent art?
I don't know.
We might be able to look at that, Ken and I.
You can look at it and it doesn't have to be done in this iteration, but if there's something we can do to simplify or something, just think about if there's a way we can solve it. Right.
Thirty days or forty-five days.
Something like that. Yeah. Okay. All right, consent, anybody? Is everybody okay with consent on this?
So it comes back. I'm sorry, I've sort of misunderstood. This is discussion. It'll come back in the first read next time and then.
Oh, it's its ordinance change. So it's never mind, forget consent.
I'll see you three times.
Right, right, right. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't possibly be right. We're finished. We're finished. All right, public comments. Any public comments? Seeing none. City manager comments.
Yes, Mayor, we will need a executive session for personnel, legal and real estate.
Okay. And council, any comments, Tom? Okay, anybody?
Move to exit to executives.
I just wanted to, I think we thanked the art, I mean, the Lemonade Day volunteers already at the last meeting, but the arts rotary helps with the Arts Festival and other volunteers. Thank y'all for making that possible. Yeah, a lot of, yeah, we had a lot going on. It's all good. Okay, Stacy.
Move to exit to executive sessions for purposes of personnel, legal and real estate.
Moved by Stacy, second by Joe. All in favor, raise your hands. We'll be back. Well, I was a little confused and I knew it was a short meeting.
I sit on this cushion.
Okay.
And I think the judge leaves it here. I think he leans on it, but that, if you can pull it out.
Pull it out a little bit.
Stand on it, it'll get up.
Sure.
It's a terrible thing.
Pull it out like in front of it.
Yeah, like right here.
Oh, I see. So it's further. Okay.
Second.
Aye.